I'm thirty, so let's start the meeting on time and let's get going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to start off by offering our condolences to some of the families. First, the family of Robert W. Patterson. Mr. Patterson served in the United States Navy aboard the USS Rankin during the Korean War. To the family of John E. Welch, upon his passing on July 21st, 2017, Mr. Welch served in the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. To the family of Christopher R. Thrasher, upon his passing on August 1st, 2017, Mr. Thrasher served in Sea Company, 1-182nd Infantry Regiment, 4th Infantry Division of the United States Army with combat engagements in Afghanistan. To the family of Brenda Franz, upon her passing August 1st, 2017, Ms. Franz served in the United States Navy during World War II. She was a school crossing guard with the Bridgewater Police Department for many years through the 1940s until the 1980s. A moment of silence for the families. So first, you might notice, I'm sitting as the President today, it's my first time doing this, pardon my first year of being on the council, so it's unique, I hope I enjoy it somewhat. Please don't scare me, everyone. So first, we have announcements from the President. I have no announcements. Then we go to C, Proclamations. No proclamations.
How about A?
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval for minutes from previous meetings. Sorry. It's a voice vote to approve for the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
On second.
And all in favor, so.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained. I wasn't here.
Okay. They're approved. Thank you, Dennis. Proclamations, we have no proclamations, so we can move to D, Citizens Open Forum. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, now's the time. Please come to the microphone, first name, last name, address, and try and be brief. Thank you.
It's Jennifer Smith, Block 1225. Good evening, Council. I just want to think, it's important to note that Bridgewater vote is rejected, question four. The voters of this town have already spoken that they are not in favor of the sale of recreational marijuana here in town. In communities where voters rejected question four, which would be Bridgewater, elected officials have the power to ban these establishments. My neighbors and I strongly urge this council to ban the sale of recreational marijuana here in Bridgewater, like so many other surrounding towns have already done so. I have faith that this council will do the right thing for the families and citizens of Bridgewater. I honestly believe that we are better than this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fellow citizens and council members, my name is Lisa McSweeney. I live on South Drive. I've lived in Bridgewater for forty-two years of my life. My parents moved here because of the town's beauty and family community. Growing up in this town always provided me with a safe and happy environment. As a teenager, I could walk downtown with my friends, where we would go bowling and have lunch at Friendly's, and just walk around knowing that the town was built on great family values. Now, as a parent, when asked, "Mom, can I go downtown to walk with my friends?", the answer's always "No". Why? It's because I do not feel that this town has the same feeling it once had. There's nothing for kids to walk to, a safe destination. If we allow a pot shop to be accepted, what do you think will happen to this town, present and future? We know as a society what already happens on a day-to-day timeframe with drugs. By allowing a recreational marijuana store to be built in our town, it will be as if we welcome and add to the already existing drug problems. We're also a university town. If my children were to come to view the college knowing there was a recreational marijuana store, it would dissuade me from Bridgewater for my children's college education. There are many other ways to bring revenue to this town that I agree is greatly needed. Allowing the opportunity for the store would harm all of us, adults and children of today and tomorrow. I plead with the town council to not consider allowing the existence of this store in our beautiful community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Taylor Sullivan, 250 Norland Park. I think I speak for many of the people here, I recognize a lot of people, I think a lot of people are here to do with hearing about the possibility of bringing pot shops here. And I just want to say, I speak on behalf of them and many of the residents, or most of the residents I know. I want to call attention to the fact that the town council, town officials, y'all are considering allowing stores here to sell a federally illegal drug. This is a drug that is still illegal federally, and so I want to call that to the attention first. I want to remind you that the FDA has not approved marijuana for any safe or effective use, even medicinal marijuana. It has not been approved for anything. The THC levels in marijuana are not regulated by anyone but the commercial industry themselves, who is going to make the most money off of this. Again, it's not regulated because we're talking about a federally illegal drug. This presents a serious public health and safety issue to this town. And this is the reason, one of the many reasons, why we don't want the commercial pot industry in town. Allowing pot shops here increases access to a federally illegal drug and decreases the perception that it's harmful. I've heard at a lot of the meetings, they mention education, we educate the youth. What kind of message are you sending? You want to educate the youth not to use marijuana, but you want to sell it in your town? No amount of education is going to undo the effects of selling it in your town, and that's the message that you're sending, that it's a normal drug. It's not. It's a mind-altering drug. And the economic benefit, which is why the town is considering it, study Colorado, the revenue that you would get will be mitigated by the cost of law enforcement and the character of your town. You're going to spend more money on drug-related accidents, you're going to have more disputes that you can't even correlate to the effects of drugs. And that's all I want to say. And I really hope that you guys will do the right thing, not vote for a moratorium, do what the people of Bridgewater voted back in November, no on question four, fifty-one percent. We all voted, y'all in, so you should, you know, listen to the people that elected you and ban it and stop this process because I think, as you all know, Rainham, East Bridgewater have banned it, Pembroke has banned it, a lot of the neighboring towns, because they voted no. And the state gave you that option to honor what your citizens voted without going through all of this. So I ask you to take that seriously from the people that elected you and honor that.
Thank you.
Lillian Holbrook, Driftwood Drive. Good evening, members of the town council and citizens of Bridgewater. I am here tonight, not in the capacity of a school committee member, but as a resident, taxpayer, and retired educator. I am very disheartened to learn that the class size at the elementary level are on the rise. As of the one, of the hundred and eight new enrollments to the district as of July 7th, forty-one of them have enrolled at the Mitchell School. Presently, there are four sections of kindergarten at 22 and six sections at 25, with one teacher and no paraprofessional. At the same time, the second grade class sizes are running at 26 and 27. It is early in August and families are still registering their school-aged children. This is unacceptable, to start a student's education as well as a potential safety issue for our youngest population. If you have ever spent time with a five-year-old, you know how inquisitive they are, how busy they can be exploring and finding out about the world around them. While teachers are trained professionals, they are only one person spread between twenty-five five-year-olds. There is only so much that can be expected. You reach a point where the level of education and safety is diminished. Three and four years from now, when the district receives the REMC's results for these students, we may be left wondering, what happened? When in actuality, the problem was with the setting, setting them up for failure. Research shows that smaller class sizes in the early grades provides lasting benefits to students by giving them a solid foundation for their future education. While you may not believe the class sizes are too high, and many may argue you had class sizes of thirty-plus and turned out fine, you certainly did not have the mental health issues, anxiety, hyperactivity, bullying, just to name a few, or the rigorous curriculum, or the accountability that there is today in education. Kindergarten is no longer about play. It is an academically oriented grade like any other. These five- and six-year-olds are expected to learn three different genres of writing and know the difference between each one. Additionally, they are expected to write one to two sentences by the end of their time in kindergarten in each of these three genres of writing. Behavioral issues are far more complex than they were ten years ago, further contributing to safety concerns. Teachers have many more challenges today just to keep their students safe. The district was being proactive by proposing a budget that included two additional teachers. It was inevitable that the schools would be getting an influx of students, given all the building that is going on in town. Unfortunately, when the district found out they had to cut additional monies from their budget, these positions, along with the reduction of school adjustment counselors from three to one, were made with much reluctance and dismay. I respectfully invite you to visit the schools, especially at the beginning of the year, so you can see firsthand what is happening. This will allow you to make an informed decision when making budgetary decisions that will impact the future of today's youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Melissa DeJarnin. I'm at 33 Pearl Street. Was I supposed to give you my address? I'm here for two reasons. One, I'm introducing myself as the new chair for the Community Preservation Committee. I haven't met some of you yet, so here I am. Hopefully, you'll see me from time to time. Second, I'm just also echoing the concern I have for the enrollments information I only had because I'm also on the school building committee. Back in June, we heard that enrollments were about twenty-two, twenty-three, and now they're up to twenty-five of six of the classes, as you've heard. And that's just the beginning. I don't have actual stats, but generally, a lot of the baby boomers are selling their houses and more families are moving in, so it's not just the new development that is bringing in school-aged children. I don't want to go on too long here, but I just would like you to reconsider the class sizes, especially at the kindergarten level. Some of, some of these children have never been in a school environment before, so the teacher might have to be spending some extra time with those new students. So the fewer, the better in the class. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a prepared statement at all, but I am inspired by...
Your name for the record?
Oh, Rosemary Mitchell, Hunter's Drive, number twenty, Hunter's Drive. I just wanted to say that I am in agreement with the people who spoke before about bringing in marijuana, recreational marijuana, and I agree with all their arguments that they so eloquently put forward, but I do want to mention property house values. We've been here almost thirty years. I would hate to see the care and all that we have given to our home, to think that our property values will go down and people will not be attracted to the town. There are young families coming in, we want to encourage that, but I don't think it's encouraging to give a character to our town. We have the medicinal marijuana, I think we've done our civic duty there. I'm asking the council to be proactive, set forth your ban, stand up for what the people in Bridgewater want, rather than being reactive and seeing the effects, the negative effects that this would bring upon our town. Be proactive, stand up for what your residents want, and let us be proud of our town and have it a positive atmosphere for young families. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Rowan. I'm at 15 Brownfield Drive, and I'm a newer Bridgewater resident. We've lived here about a year. We have our oldest daughter entering kindergarten, and I came to also voice my concern about the numbers. Twenty-four to twenty-five seems a little high to me, and I just kind of wanted to become a part of the conversation and introduce myself, and I look forward to hearing more about it and, and attending more town hall meetings, hopefully. So, nice to meet everybody.
Thank you. If not, we'll move on to appointments. Having no appointments, we move on to the hearing, which was due for 7:35. Suppose we can start that at 7:47. This is order O-2017-038, CPC transfer for a capital project, Legion Field Lights. Details are... Active Michael, could you go into the details on that?
Sure. This is a hearing for the transfer of community preservation funds to fund the new lighting system at Legion Field. And, and the request is, I believe, two-hundred and... Give me just a second. Two-thirty, correct. Thank you. Two-hundred and thirty-one thousand. That's it.
Okay, thanks.
I'm new to this desk, don't forget. So, is the petitioner present and wish to speak? Anybody? Do we have anybody, general questions regarding the hearing, the Legion Field Lights?
I'll speak if they have any questions.
Mr. President, if you can have Mr. Simons go.
Would you like to come up?
Only known you for years, can't pronounce your last name. Describe the project. Just gonna call you Charlie, but that'd be too...
Charlie Simons, Recreation Superintendent. Does anybody have any questions?
If I may, Mr. President. So maybe if you could just briefly explain what's going to happen for $231,000 if the project passes all, all the votes.
Okay, fine. How this arrived at is, the lights that are presently there on both ball fields at Legion Field, the only two courts that are lit, I'm sorry, fields that are lit, were roughly 1992. They were erected with telephone poles. They're in extremely bad shape right now, extreme safety issue. The lights were probably, two or three years after we put them up, they were thousand-watt metal halide, which are now, I guess the word would be, out of date, considerably out of date. So it's becoming a safety hazard for the kids that are playing at that level, not only to see, but the poles themselves are leaning, could be a severe issue. So that's why we put together this package to go before the community preservation. I think we've allocated roughly $70,000 per field, somewhere in that range. The balance would be for an electrical contractor to come and run all new conduit, piping, wiring, the whole bit. We're going to try to dismantle some of that to save money. So, but we think we've covered ourselves enough with the funds that we've asked for to handle this project. If we don't need that money, that will come back to them. We won't spend it, obviously. But it's something that really needs to be done now, and we did it for this period of time of year, where we can get it done with the least safety hazard, so that it'll be ready to go for next spring. I've been in contact with a company to give us a rough idea of a scope of work, knowing that, you know, people, we will go out to bid on this, but to give us an idea to what we have there now, if there's anything that we could use, some of the piping in the ground. And I'm actually meeting tomorrow with a gentleman to go over a lot of that. But the lighting company that we're using is Musco Lighting, and that's the number-one lighting company in the United States. They're affiliated with Little League Baseball. They do many fields all over the country, pro baseball, the whole bit, so they're a very, very good company. Like I said, we will go out to bid for a project, a company to come in and do, basically scope it out and do the full installation. I've been in touch with a wire, electrical inspector. We've come down, we've looked at what we have, the new lights would handle it, maybe less usage of electricity. So I think we'll be in a really good spot in a couple months, if we can get this done, and it'll be ready to go for next year.
Thank you.
That's it?
I don't have any questions.
Do you have the cheat sheet for the hearing?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the cheat sheet for the hearing?
I have the cheat sheet for the hearing.
No, 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 not that one.
The order of questions and...
Yes, so that was in favor. We have those in favor and those in opposition. That's my cheat sheet.
Yes, you have to ask if there's...
Would anybody like to speak in favor of the Legion Field Lights order, transfer? Hearing none. Would anybody like to...
So, Matt Gavigan, I am the VP of the Bridgewater Little League Board of Directors. And so, we've been working with Charlie and the Recreation Committee on this proposal, and we have over six hundred players that play on those fields throughout the season. And as Charlie mentioned, it has become a safety issue with the lights themselves, not only from, be able to see, but also from the actual, you know, the lights and the wiring and what have you. Last year, we had to repair some of the conduit. So, you know, we hope that the council considers this proposal. I know we went in front of the commission, the Community Preservation Commission, talked to them about this, and we've taken the necessary steps. We feel that, obviously, this helps, you know, the youth of Bridgewater, you know, keeps them engaged, you know, playing sports. Not only do, you know, Bridgewater Little League utilize the fields, but other, other organizations within, within the town utilize those fields. So, so we feel that it's beneficial for, for the residents and for the, for the kids within the town.
Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
I was wondering if there's any assessment of the energy savings. Presumably, I don't know, will the new lights be LED? Will they consume less energy than the halide, whatever the existing ones would use?
I'd send that back to Charlie, because he was involved with all of the specifications and things of that nature.
There will be, I've been told by the company that's providing the lighting, that there will be less usage. Right now, the way the lights are paid for by Little League, the money they raise and the funds, just like youth football pays for the utilities that they use, Little League does too, but there will be less energy used.
You don't know, you don't know how much less?
No, I really don't know the exact amount. I was told by the man from Let's Go, based on what we have now in there, it'll be a good amount. That's what he said to me.
Do you know what you spend now, what the Little League pays now for lighting? For electricity?
I couldn't, I wouldn't want to say anything, because I'm, without having the exact, you know, Carlton probably knows more about it than I do.
Right.
Because he's been involved with all the buildings and the rec, under the rec, looking at different things, but they pay their light bill.
Right.
And, so, I can't really, I really don't, I don't know. But we're maxed out. Right now, the electrical inspector, right now, Walter Murray, was the one that installed that years ago in 1992. And we maxed out on all our electrical input in that building right now. Like, it's maxed to the, I mean, jammed right to the max. So, that will be significantly lessened by, the way the lights are made now, there's, there's six poles on each field.
Yeah.
There's only going to be four. And the overflow, what they call overflow lighting, is, is much better directed to the field, not way out. So, it's just far superior right now than what we have.
Yep. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody in the public speaking in opposition? None? Questions from councilors? Any further questions from the councilors? Scott Bonus?
I'm wondering if there's any effort made for, I know this CPC in the past has asked that petitioners try to find alternate sources of funding, and I'm just concerned that we've got, had several proposals come in without any outside funding, and, so I'm really concerned about that. I'd like to see at least a 10%, you know, offset from some other source. And, I just, I'm, I'm just afraid we're depleting our CPC funds too rapidly. What was that?
Somebody have a comment?
Can anyone address that?
Well, I can address it because we've had, when we went to look at the financing of the whole proposal here and what it was going to cost, I spoke to Little League about it. And within the system, they have a funding source through Little League sponsorships with Major League Baseball, there's a whole variety of things. Through the different people that I've talked to, we're, they're still going to look for some money to come back through this. But in order to, for us to do this project, we need this money now. If we don't need it, or we get reimbursed, then it'll be less money that's used from community preservation.
Right.
So, it's, we need, we need to have that approval so we can go and do this job right away. But they have banks, see, the, the whole thing is, with Little League and with any of the other sports groups in town, they all get volunteer money coming from everywhere that goes into their day-to-day activities. So, it's like, when you have a major project like this, it would take years for them to raise money to go strictly towards lighting. So, that's why with this funding source, if we can do that, and they can get other funding to help out with this, every, you know, it just gets better without them having to come to us and say, "We need more money for this or that." It's the same thing when we built the girls softball field. Girls softball had raised like a hundred grand, and then we came to community preservation. So, it's kind of like the same thing. It's, but they do have other sources that they are looking into to get reimbursed with some of that money.
Mr. President, if I, if I could, I'd ask Mr. Simons to describe the in-kind contribution that Parks and Rec will contribute, for instance, the decommissioning of the current system.
That's what we're planning to do right now, is, from my angle, to do as much labor that can save money on a project. I'll meet with this project engineer or whatever, and he'll look at the whole scope, and he says, "Well, it'll save you money if you can do this, if you can do that." So I'm planning on getting the lights, the poles that are there now, with the help of the electrical inspector, killing the power to the whole thing, pulling the conduits out, detaching them from the poles, us acquiring a use of a crane, pulling up the, laying them down, taking off the lights, dismantling it, all that saves money.
Right.
If you have a company come in to do all that, so that's all part of the show that we're trying to do. I won't know exactly how much I can do until we get, we get it out to bid and we get the project, because some, some people, for instance, they might not want us to do that, you know, in part of their bids. Not that we still can't do it, but a lot of companies want, no, we're responsible for the whole thing. But as far as installing the new poles, they will have a contractor that comes in, exactly and put those poles in where they're supposed and put those poles in where they're supposed to be. We would not have anything to do with that. But the dismantling, if that conduit, if it can't be used, we'll dig that up, and we'll pull it out and dismantle everything. So those are the things that, between some volunteers at Little League, Rec Department, we'll do that, and that'll save money.
Yeah. Well, I understand what you, I mean, you put an awful lot of work in the music alley. I know you personally, and so I understand that you're fully motivated to do that. I would just like to, you know, try to make sure we can get some money back into the CPC as much as possible.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, you've been wondering, I don't know if Mr. Hunt can speak to the savings in electricity. I'd like to see the savings in electricity sent back to the CPC. If we can calculate, that'll be 3,000 bucks a year, that, you know, the 3,000 bucks for the next 10 years goes back to the CPC.
Yeah. I, well, right now, I mean, Little League is paying that cost all along.
Right. So they'll be saving that money, and so perhaps they could pass that savings on back to the CPC.
In all due respect, I think you might be opening a can of worms, because they also pay user fees to the town. You know what I'm saying? It's maybe for a later discussion. I understand what you're saying, you'd like to see it come back. But I mean, the taxpayers of Bridgewater, they do pay into this.
Yep.
You know, and so if they're in favor of this project, that money is there for a reason to go back into the taxpayers, for whatever reason, whether it's active recreation or passive or whatever. I think that's kind of splitting hairs, them saving money that they can use to put back or do other things within that whole thing. You know, I, I'm just cautious on that end. I think if we can, if they can save money, I think that's a great thing with the electric, you're using less electricity. I don't see how you can funnel it back to CPC. What I do see is if you, okay, 231,000, and we save, maybe we don't use 10 or 20 of it or whatever, due to their involvement or whatever, that goes back to the CPC. You know, it won't be used. We won't know until we get hard numbers.
Yep.
We think we needed that 231...
To get started.
To get it going and don't have any headaches, so that it's not postponed until the spring, they're ready to go and play night games, and we don't have lights.
Yep.
So I think we'll, between powers that be, Little League and Rec Department, we're looking at it as, this is going to be a volunteer effort. We're going to need help to do a lot of different things there, to save money too. So if they, if they're lucky enough to get some reimbursement money, and I think, you know, talking to them through either Major League Baseball or some of the other fund, you know, the Yaki Foundation, all these different things, if they're able to get money, they would probably be willing to help out back to the community preservation funds.
Mr. Vice President, maybe Mr. Hunt...
Yes.
...address that question of savings.
Mr. Hunt, if you have more to add to that or further to address?
Hi. Carlton Hunt, Idi Austin Street, Chair of the Energy Committee. I don't have a lot of recollection of whether or not this was brought before the Energy Committee, so that we can give you any numbers on energy savings. I do, I do know that the discussions I've had, the lamps will use less energy quantitatively. We have no idea. That would be up to the electrical company, which apparently we've hired already. I'm trying to understand how we hired somebody before a project is in play. But I have another, in addition to Mr. Colombo's idea of reimbursement, I think that there's another path, that the CPC money can be reimbursed. It's my understanding that the golf course bond will be paid off this year, next year, very shortly. I think you could put in play that that recreation money that's no longer going to the bond would be used to pay back at least 50% of this community preservation money. I think that's one way to, that's one way, excuse me?
I'm sorry? I had the mic. Thank you.
That's another way to deal with community preservation money and having the Rec Department pick it up as was intended way back when we had the golf course go in place. So that's my suggestion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the councilors? I'd like to close the hearing at 8:05.
I'll make a motion to approve Order 201738. A second. So the, I believe the Finance Committee met on Monday night or previously and voted in favor of this.
Correct.
Correct. Budget and Finance met last night and voted in favor of this 3-0. Just a little due diligence here. So we had the town accountant at our meeting, as well as the town manager. We walked through the balance sheet of the CPC and see that there is enough capital within the, within, the working capital within the CPC to do this. I was a little concerned about that, but there's clearly enough working capital there to do that. We also read through the recommendations of the CPC, the Rec Commission, and several others to get this project done, so I'm highly in favor of that, of this, and hopefully everybody else is. Thank you.
We entertain the motion to approve?
We already did.
Done.
You need to ask if anyone else wants to discuss.
Does anyone else would like, anyone else like to discuss? Dennis?
I'll say.
Mr. Colombo.
My, I prefer that we put off this vote until we get firmer numbers on the electricity use. It could be significant electricity savings. I don't see why that shouldn't go back to the CPC. So I would not be in favor of passage at this point.
If I may, Mr. President?
You may.
My understanding of this vote is that we're not spending the money, that we're actually earmarking the project money, and that the project money would then be spent after bidding and everything else. Is that correct? We've had, in projects like the wall down at the Stanley Works and things like that, so we earmark the money. It's encumbered in the CPC until it's released. So this isn't actually purchasing lighting, it's getting it set up for that, and then other discussions could happen.
But all due respect, I think we lose any control over the spending if we pass this vote tonight.
I disagree, Councilor Colombo. I mean, Community Preservation Committee, for the dealings that I have had with them, you know, take, take these requests very, very serious and make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted when someone presents to them a project requiring expenditure from the CPC. And as it has been brought out tonight, those current lights down there are 25 years old, and it's a safety issue for the kids that play down there, over 600 of them, as we were told. So I think that during the process, there will be checks and balances to make sure that the money is spent according to the proposal that was written, and the amount that's being appropriated, you know, the bids that come in might come in, might come in less. There may be some cost savings as the project goes forward with others stepping up to help fund it. So I, and we heard last, we heard last night that there is appropriate funds. We're not depleting any fund to pay for this. There's still a good balance in the CPC fund.
Can I have one more comment? I'm just disappointed that we don't have these, it seems like the cost for electricity could be substantial, and that the savings from technology at 25 years old could be significant, and that could be a significant amount of money. I don't see why it wouldn't go back to the CPC. That's all.
So shall we go back to motioning to approve?
We already did that. You can take a vote now.
Any more, there's no more discussion.
Voting, yes.
And we vote.
Please forgive me. All right, so then we can do a roll call vote?
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
No.
Four in favor, one against.
Thank you to everybody to my left and right for helping me along with this. I want to say that. So license transactions, next on the agenda. So Town Council letter authorizing one-day bingo, Friends of Freetown Lakeville Warriors Swimming Inc. And according to the requirements set forth by Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, we have a letter to serve as the town's approval for following the one-day bingo license. And we can have a voice vote for that, correct? A motion to vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day bingo license.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay. Voice vote? Okay, let's go for a voice vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Now we're onto presentations. Town Clerk will be up to present the 2016 Annual Town Report update.
Good evening. Congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can get this started right here. I wish I could make, make it stretch a little bit.
Hit the X.
No, no, I don't want to X out. I need the navigation pane to go through things. So I guess I'll just use it with the navigation pane showing, but it, you're not going to be able to read all the text, but I'm not planning on having you read the whole document anyway.
Could you make the navigation pane narrower?
That's what I was trying, that's what I was trying.
Right there. Take this down right there. Take it down, narrow it up.
Take which one?
Here.
This one?
Yeah.
Ah, there. Can everybody still see it?
Yes.
Magic. So as you know, I'm going to go through this preface a little bit. This is the preface to the annual town report, and I think I'll kind of just read that part, because it does explain what we're doing here that's different from other annual town reports that Bridgewater has had. This is the first Bridgewater Annual Town Report compiled and issued since 2008. In 2010, Bridgewater's government changed from a town to a city, and with legislative permission, we continue to use the name Town of Bridgewater, but we are a city government, as you know. Cities are not required by mass general law to create annual town reports. Therefore, since 2010, we have not been required. We were still in 2009 and probably for 2010 also, until we changed our government. But they're guided by their charters and their administrative codes. In 2016, with the enactment of Bridgewater's new administrative code, responsibility for creating the annual town report was passed to the town clerk's office. Before that, it had always been the responsibility of the town administrators or the town manager's office. The town clerk's office has an acute awareness of the import of town reports in tracking towns' history and recording events that in the future will be of historical interest and importance. Thus, the office has excitedly accepted this assignment and has worked diligently to produce this year's edition. The report, as requested by the town manager, is going to be organized, it is organized to correspond to Bridgewater's new administrative code. So that's going to be a little bit different in format from the town reports of yesteryears. However, not all departments, volunteer boards, commissions, committees have been fully reorganized to comply with the administrative code. So we make an apology in our preface to citizens who are trying to read this in the future and may find that things seem a little wonky as we still get our admin code straightened out. And I'll also say, with no additional funding or staff for the project, the town clerk's office sought volunteer assistance. And as you know, I asked for funding for a $20,000 grant to get a consultant to do this project. That was denied. I went to the university. I tried to find a graduate student to take this on as a project, a very comprehensive graduate, I thought a graduate student in government might find it really interesting, and that didn't go. So we found an incredible volunteer, Rebecca Fleisch Caderro, who's a resident with excellent editorial and technological skills and an incredible amount of patience and diligence. Future Bridgewater citizens and historic researchers and the current town clerk owe her a great debt. She's already put in over 200 hours of work. We think that we're probably going to get this to the publisher by October. Many of our reports were very late, even though we asked for them. In January, with a March 3 deadline, we were still getting reports coming in in the middle of July, which was our deadline. So with vacations and working with a volunteer who actually has a life, it's taking a while to get it all done. Upon completion of this edition, the town clerk will begin work on the 2015 Annual Town Report. And when that is finished, in July of 2018, in January of 2018, will begin work on the 2017 Annual Report. And when that is done, we will go back and give it our best shot to try to compile a compendium from 2009 to 2014. There will not be an actual town report, but we will cobble together as much information as we can get. We want to track the change of government in Bridgewater and the recall of some councilors and some important historic facts that happened during that time. But that's going to be kind of another heavy lift. So that's the preface. We're trying to set the tone for what this report is going to be, and note that it follows the admin code as closely as we could. Our next section is the in memoriam. We have two people that we're memorializing, Judd Kane and Tony Anacki, both of whom died in 2016. Then we're going to, this is part of how the old format used to be, the Town of Bridgewater, and so we give like kind of vital statistics of where we are. We're in Plymouth County, we're in Massachusetts, these are the towns in Plymouth County, that sort of thing. Then we give an overview. We need a new name. As you can see, we need a new name for, a new heading for this, so if you have a brilliant idea for what you want to call this, just let us know. We start out with the town website, emergency numbers, and then we give numbers for all of the departments. And as you can see, when you look at things like DPW, you would see Public Works, some of the things, we have Community and Economic Development building, and all of those things are underneath it. So when we come down to things like highway, it'll say Public Works, because the admin code puts it in Public Works. So those are the sort of things that we're trying to get the words out there so that the public knows what the admin code says and how to term the departments. We go to elected town officials. You'll find yourselves all listed under here. There you go. There you are. Then we'll go to the town officers, giving all the phone numbers. And as you can see, when someone leaves and someone new has taken place, we've tried to track that too, for historic reasons. Let them know who's there now and who was there. And then when you see these things, sometimes you might see something and say, "Oh, well, that isn't true." Just remember, this is 2016. This ended last December, so it isn't what is current now. Then we go to the section Boards, Committees, and Commissions. We give them a little introduction to the open meeting law, and we say, "Who is on what committee?" And who was on what committee in 2016? So you can just see that we've got all those. Then we go to Administrative Personnel in the town for 2016. We go to a rather large section on elections. In 2016, there were four elections, so all the details from all those elections are compiled in here, you know, everything that happened. And then we go to the administrative code. So we talk about when you voted in the admin code, and when it started to function was January 2011. A little bit of description, this is basically what is in the beginning of the admin code. Just maybe cut down, edit it a little bit for this particular document. And then we give, we're not planning on printing a whole lot of town reports. I don't know if you remember, when we used to go to town meeting, there was a town report printed for every citizen who came to town meeting, like we had stacks of them. I'm not into wasting paper like that or money, like money that we don't have like that. So this will be online for everyone to have, and we will probably print about 15 copies, a couple for the library, a couple for the town clerk's office, a couple for the town manager, something like that. We're not going to make an extensive printing, one for Bob Wood. So you will see that there are hyperlinks in here, and the publisher is going to deal with those, how to make those work. Then we put in, to kind of guide people, we put in an org chart that shows where things fall, like for instance, under Public Works, that you have structures and grounds and water pollution and that sort of thing, that under Community and Economic Development, you have the Health Department. Just some things are a little bit organized differently than they had been before the admin code was in there. So we wanted to kind of give citizens a chance to see that visually before they start going into the reports. This is the section on the reports. So I think we had just a couple committees that didn't give us reports. For instance, the Affordable Housing Trust. People were sworn into it, but it didn't meet, and they didn't give us a report. So we just... We tried to use the same language for any committee that didn't give us a report. And then the ones that did, some of them are very long. We didn't spend much of our editorial effort trying to rewrite the reports in a particular language. We let it be the language of the chair or whoever from that committee wrote it. What Becky did do was go through and make sure that anytime anyone was using acronyms or something like that, that we had a spell out of it so that there would be a chance that everybody would know what they were reading. Then we have the elected officials, town reports, the library board of trustees, my report for the town clerk's office, and your town council report. And there's your picture. It's the best we could do. We grabbed it off of BTV. Grabbed a still off of BTV, and so you're all there. And then all the legislation that you've passed is going to be in its own section at the... In another place in the document. And it'll link the hyper... I think we've decided not to put it all in the document. We've put the page that tells the ordinance number and a brief description of it. And then we're going to have a hyperlink to the website and all of the actual legislation. We have the regional school department's reports for BR MVP. And then we have the town department reports, which are different than the boards, committees, and commissions. And this was kind of a big learning, a steep learning curve for some of the town employees who've been here for a long time because, for instance, the Board of Health and the Health Department in the old format just submitted one report. The Recreation Department and the Rec Commission had just submitted one report formerly. So it may sound simple, but it was kind of hard to describe to people, excuse me, why they had to submit two reports to us, why they had to give us a report from the department, and then why they had to give us another report from the board and try to bifurcate their thinking. And so we did it, and it's in here. Then we have outside services, Old Colony Planning Council, the mosquito control, and Southeastern Regional Service Group. Then we do have all the legislation. And we've put in the directories, as you can see, for that, for each one of the things that you've passed. And at the very end will be the financials, which we have. But our publisher has asked us to send them to him, and he will put them in because they're very tiny print. And this is a six-by-nine book, so it's going to be kind of a challenge. So Becky isn't formatting those. We don't want to mess with them and take any chance that we mess up figures or do anything. So we're just sending them to the publisher. So that's the annual town report coming up for 2016. Are there any questions?
Questions?
First of all... Okay.
Mr. Gallagher.
Am I on? First of all, thank you very much for the effort that you... And I forgot the individual's name.
Becky Caderro.
Becky's.
We need her name in big letters.
I appreciate very much. I'm sure we all do of her stepping up to assisting you and the town in getting this up to date. As far as the financials that aren't... What will be the financials that you put in there? The budget? Will it be budget?
Whatever Tony gave us. Yes.
The budget? revenues and expenditures and all that stuff?
Whatever was in before
Okay.
are the same things he's given us.
Okay.
Since we didn't really manipulate them or do anything with them, I'm not very eloquent. I don't really know what they mean or what they are. I haven't looked at it myself.
Thank you. That's it.
Other questions? Mr. Wood?
I think this is fantastic. This has been a long time discussing this, and you and Becky.
Becky.
Yeah, and everybody in the office have done a fantastic job doing this. So I think the idea was that you'll do this one and then kind of backtrack and go forward at the same time?
Yeah. Yep. Our plan had been to have this at the printer in July and then start immediately on 2015. I have some things from 2015 because I had asked people to submit them, so I will have some things. I was just talking to Michael today. It's a little perplexing, and if you have any advice, I'm happy to take it because 2015 wasn't under the admin code. So now we've spent all the time training everybody how to get us the reports under the admin code. And we've got our whole format and our whole template set up to go forward in 2017 under the admin code. But then we're going to go backward to 2015 where there wasn't an admin code. And actually, it has just dawned on me recently that that's the situation we've gotten ourselves into.
Here's my suggestion. Let's pretend we did it in 2010 like we were supposed to do and then just continue using that format.
We can. If there were a template, that would be really good. There isn't. You know, there wasn't a template for that. It was all... It wasn't done like this. Like now we really have a template, and we can just take things out and we can plug new things in. It wasn't that way in 2008. The computer technology wasn't even all that good. And we just... We don't have anything electronic that we can just follow. We're going to have to create it again. And so we either try to cram it into this template or we just do something new. And I've been kind of hesitant to ask a volunteer who's spent so much time doing it to try to think the other way and do it, but...
Just two more follow-ups. So my father and I used to argue, believe it or not, over...
And you don't anymore, right?
Yeah. You know it. It's Chapter 40, Section 49, covers the town reports. And in there, it clearly states selectmen, town, and obviously cities or... Like ours that follow a city form of government don't have to send a copy up to the library and that sort of thing. But going forward, I agree with you. I think it's a great idea to do these annually because when you look back at even just a decade ago, you can't remember who was in the seats and what was going on, what the financials were like. So how can we help you with either instructions or other suggestions, a resolution or whatever, to help keep this into an annual process?
Well, as long as I'm here, I don't think you have to do anything because I think it's valuable. And I campaigned on wanting this to happen. And I am determined, as I hope you can see, to make it happen. But going forward in the future, it does say in MGL, Chapter 40, da-da-da-da, that cities are exempt. Cities do not have to do this. And since we are a city, you may want to adopt some sort of resolution or something that memorializes the fact that you want this to happen. Well, no, 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 no. I take that all back. That was baloney. You've got it in your admin code. You've got it in your admin code, so you're covered. That's all you have to do is have it in either your charter or your admin code. So that's why, as of 2016, it wasn't an option anymore. I will note you did not put any money toward it.
Is there a timetable in the admin code? I'll have to go look. Because I know in Section 49...
Oh, you mean to say to do it every year?
Well, not every year, but in Section 49, it says to do it by the first town meeting.
Oh, no, I don't think there is anything. It just says that it'll be done by the town clerk's office. It doesn't... So if you wanted to do that and put a, you know, a time limit on it, I would say not to like beat a dead horse. But if you wanted to put a time limit on it, then you should get some staff to do it because it's difficult to find a volunteer who has the kind of time that Mrs. Caderro has. She has a house in South Carolina. She has a house up here. And she asked me specifically for a very large project that she could do, that she could do remotely from wherever she was. And people don't come to you and say that every day. And especially not with these kind of skills and ability. So it might not be a bad thing to think of how you would actually like to support this if we don't have that kind of a volunteer to do it. Because I honestly could not have put the 200 hours that have been put into it so far. I've put my own probably 110 hours into it. But I would think it might be something you might want to consider actually paying for. And I think Michael's going to pay for the printing, right?
Sure.
That's what you told me. Okay, other?
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. One thing, is all her 200 hours' worth of work going to make next year easier?
Yes, it should because really there was a big learning curve. First of all, some town employees had never done this before. I mean, they've been hired since 2008, and so they've never written a town report. Most of them didn't have anything old in their computers that they could follow. And for some of them, for instance, the Planning Board, it was a whole new thing. And the Board of Health, it was a whole new thing for them to have to... Usually, they would just write one report for the Planning Board, and that went in as the whole planning thing. And I'm asking them for a report from their department and a report from their board. And that was more difficult in that you're asking the volunteer chair of the board to write the report, and the staff liaison from the department to write his or her report. So before, it used to be just done by the staff liaison. You see what I mean? So when you're tracking down reports and trying to get them in in a timely fashion, it's harder to pin down the volunteers and say, "You've got to get this to me right now."
And is that method also dictated by the admin code to have them from each? Or is that a decision?
No, we did that because of the... Because, well, yes, because of the admin code. Because there are boards, committees, and commissions, and there are departments. And we felt that we needed to put the departments all in one place and the boards, committees, commissions in another place. And I, you know, I don't know that before it was particularly great to have one report that was partly board, committee, or commission and partly department. You know, to me, it makes more sense that each one of them would be reporting on what they do, even though one is supporting the other. But that wasn't an easy concept to implement.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. And thank you, Becky. So we move on to town manager's report.
All right, Mr. President, I have a few items just to sort of give you an update on. Nothing that you haven't already heard probably, but just some updates. As you all well know by now, at least in the meeting, we do have a marijuana ad hoc committee that the council put together to advise it on future actions that the council should take. That committee did hear from the Mass Municipal Association's David Lakeman at a recent meeting. He talked at some length about the very newly passed legislation that has been adopted by the state. I can tell you from, I think universally, from town manager, town administrator perspective, it's a very difficult legislation to track and follow. But with the help of the town attorney and some advice statewide, we hope to have a breakdown of what the law really means sometime soon. But ultimately, we won't really know what the law means until the regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission are released. And that is, I believe, scheduled to be sometime in March. So we're tracking that, and we will keep the council updated and obviously the marijuana ad hoc committee updated as best possible. We have one wine and malt package store liquor license available for disposition by the council, which is the licensing authority. We will be placing an ad in the paper notifying, you know, noticing folks that it is available. We'll also put a notice on our town website. And we will ask people to submit completed applications by a date certain. And then the process would be that the council then decides who to grant that license to. I know of one interested party. I don't know of a second yet, but just to let the council know that it may end up that you do have to make a choice. But obviously, you'll have all that paperwork in front of you in the appropriate amount of time. Community and Economic Development Office worked fairly, very diligently the last few weeks to put together a grant application for a MassWorks grant. We've requested a $3 million grant for the construction or reconstruction or rebuilding of Elm Street. The grant, in our case, focused our efforts on potentially increasing economic development in the area, new jobs and new businesses along that corridor. And that's sort of the focus of MassWorks. And that was also the focus of our grant application. So I think staff did a great job on it. And we will now begin to try to lobby those that actually make those decisions. We did apply for this last year and were denied. We spent a fair amount of time discussing with the state how we could make our application much better. And I think the efforts paid off. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll hear something positive in that regard in the coming months. Old Colony Planning Council continues to work with us to update the town's housing production plan. For those interested, there is a draft up on the website, and we are taking any comments. Lisa Sullivan in Community and Economic Development is taking any comments that folks might have on the draft. So please encourage... I do encourage people to look at that and give us any comments that you might have. A reminder to the council that the Duxborough 40B development application for 150 houses off of Curve Street does continue its public hearing in front of the ZBA. The hearing has been continued pending the revision of some drainage plans that were submitted and also a technical peer review by our engineering firm engaged to do precisely that. So that next hearing, or the next session of that hearing will be September 27th here in the council chambers at 7:30. I think also, again, as the council probably knows, the Clermont Corporation, doing, I believe, their application under the name Viva, received site eligibility from Mass Housing for a 40B development up on their property at 495 24 intersection. So they are looking to do another 300 units of rental properties. And they've submitted, now that they've got site eligibility approval, they have filed their application with the ZBA for that project. So we'll go through that process beginning sometime within the next month. Also, they have also submitted a site plan approval for another slightly smaller office building that the renderings look fairly similar to what they have there now. But they're looking to do another slightly smaller office building in back of their current office building. So that will go along with the planning board. Obviously, the 40B application will be heard by the zoning board of appeals. Just, we have had a number of instances over the last couple of years of decaying drainage. For a long period of time, the town installed some sort of aluminum pipe product underneath the streets for stormwater drainage. Unfortunately, the hype that I guess the pipe, you know, that the pipe was going to last forever was a little over-exaggerated, and that pipe is now disintegrating. So the roadway superintendent has let me know that and kept me up to speed on a number of areas where he thinks that the drainage pipe is decaying and causing the road to decay as well. So we've got an issue in front of us. Hopefully, all these failures aren't going to happen at once, but we are going to have to begin to address many of those streets through a capital plan. We have been working with the clerk's office. It's been instrumental in trying to get some order in our filings, in our... Not our filings, our... some order in our filings and our, and our, not our filings, our documents that we, that are required to keep. And they've made tremendous progress. Most of our documents are now over in the town hall awaiting sorting and collating and, and some disposal before being moved over eventually to the memorial building. But we did meet with a state archivist yesterday, as a matter of fact, to review our plans for the records. He was actually very complimentary on our efforts so far and has promised to work very closely with us as we continue to, to get our documents, our vital documents in order. And that's a process underway. Just a quick update on the Mitchell School Building Committee. It has begun to meet to wrap up the eligibility phase and plan for the start of the feasibility phase of the building project. My understanding is that committee is focused on narrowing down the possible changes to the use of the building, trying to narrow that down to two or three scenarios, which primarily revolve around grade configurations in the, in the, the three local schools. So that next meeting is August, tentatively planned for August 21st at 6:30 over at the, what, well, the old high school. Bit of good news, Comcast has worked and thanks to a few of the counselors who have, who have really pushed this, they've, they are, they have completed the work to get live broadcasts back up and going. And so by September, I don't like to make promises, but my understanding is that by beginning of September, we'll have the ability to broadcast live again, which has been a long time coming. I also want to just thank Bridgewater State University. They've been, they were very helpful and were able to actually make a decision on a dime. When the project came to a stop, we, I reached out to them and asked them to relinquish their educational channel, or our educational channel, Channel 98, and they agreed to do that. So, so we do have work that will be completed. So I think we'll be back on the air. And the other benefit is we'll have Channel 98 to be able to do some educational programming, whether that's the BR District or BSU, whatever, whatever programming that, that might entail can originate from, from BTV. So that's good news. Just update on Auburn Street Solar Project. I think as the council knows, the Conservation Commission denied a notice of intent for that. That was appealed and we're just waiting to hear back from DEP. If DEP overturns that denial, then, then the project will move on to the, the planning board stage and, and they will see that in September or October. And finally, I did want to let the council know that this, our SAVE program, and I can't remember what that stands for, but it's sort of a senior tax write-off program, which is authorized by the state. I will be asking the council to up the amount that seniors can effectively earn, quote unquote, from $1,000 to $1,500, which reflects the state, what the state now authorizes. So I'll come to you with a reauthorization of that program under the new legislation, probably file that your first September meeting. So that's what I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor comments, questions? Mr. Wood?
It's good to hear we have another liquor license in town, but a license like that is very valuable to a business, as we've talked about in the past. Is there no provision in the state for us to give a, a high value to the license when, like an auctioner bid or, or charging more for it than, you know, a market rate? Is there nothing about that?
That's a, excuse me, a great question and I will look into it, but I'm 99% sure that you can't, you can't sort of auction off that license. You have, you, you get the, you have the ability as licensing, licensing authority to grant the license, but you can't charge more for that license than you might any other, you know, beer and wine license.
Can we put conditions on a license like you'll build a building within four years?
In this case, I think once you issue the license, you would expect to have service as soon as the ABCC approved it, so.
Secondly, you know, social media is great. Stuff flies around, all, all sorts of things. So you may not have it in front of you, so I'm going to ask you to go from memory. So the town council in the budget process actually provided for an increase in the BR assessment from last year to this year. I believe it was around 3%. Do you, do you know what that number was?
I would have to go look. I don't remember off the top of my head the percentage increase.
There's a perception of some that we've cut the budget of BR, but when in fact we actually gave an increase from year over year. And I, I just want to find out what that number is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions to the town manager tonight. Starting out, we're talking about the liquor, the liquor license that we have. We only have one license. This isn't a license for a restaurant, right? This would be, this is a license for a package store sort of, right?
Correct.
Do you know, I think there is something in the Municipal Modernization Act that was passed by the governor last year that gave municipalities the flexibility to increase those numbers. I don't know if it pertains to just restaurant liquor licenses or if it pertain to package store licenses or both. But I know that there is something, and I'll look up, I'll look it up too, if you could take a look at that, because, I mean, I mean, not that we need to have 100 more, you know, liquor license, liquor stores in town, but, but I think that the Municipal Modernization Act gave selectmen and councilmen the flexibility to go around the legal, the per capita amount that we are issued. So I don't know if we could look into that. No, I don't think we have done anything to increase those numbers in the past two years.
No.
No, okay. Secondly, we, and the point that Counselor Wood said is I had a little email exchange from a citizen about the class size at kindergarten level being increased. And I too pointed, pointed out that, you know, we didn't cut the budget, we did increase the budget. It wasn't the budget that was, that they initially had asked for, but the budget was not cut. I guess, and we heard rightly so from some, some citizens and residents tonight about class sizes, particularly at the kindergarten level. Have you received any, any letter, any correspondence, any phone call or anything from the administration, school administration, asking us to do something? Or have you had, have you had any, are they, is the school committee or the school administration looking to the town of Bridgewater to do something before September?
I talked to the superintendent, I talked to him fairly frequently, but, but he also, we also emailed back and forth. So he did let me know that they have, you know, some additional, they have additional concerns about additional students coming in before the September start of school. But there's nothing, I have no official request for additional funding.
Do you think that might, do you think that's going to come? I mean, or do you think it's, it's something that, you know, e- even though we're only a month and a half into the fiscal 18, I mean, we, we start building the fiscal 19 budget in a couple of months. And that might be something we need to certainly look at going forward. I mean, maybe a 2% or 3% increase just isn't going to be enough going forward for the school budget, particularly when you had said in your report, there's a, two projects totaling about 500 units, you know, 150, 300, and another smaller one, you said, coming into town. You know, the growth, the growth in Bridgewater's, I don't know what, what's growing in, in Rainham, but the growth here is, is coming in apartments and condos and, and homes. It's coming everywhere. And you have the baby boomers moving out and, and, you know, younger couples moving in with, with children. So I don't want, I hope we never have to go back to where we were in 2002 and 2003, which was a nightmare in this community. But, but the, the growth in this community is there. We have a school building committee looking at the Mitchell School and what we're going to do with that. But immediate concerns about class sizes is, is, you know, if, if we do hear from the superintendent and we, you know, and hopefully we'll have that discussion down the road, but I don't know. So those are the only things I have tonight.
Other questions? Scott Bottos?
Thank you. To piggyback on Mr. Gallagher's point about the increased class sizes, I'm wondering to what extent we can monitor new growth. And, you know, presumably with new apartments, new building coming in, there's increased tax revenue. And it would seem to make sense to allocate some of that increased revenue towards, you know, increased staffing levels. If not, you know, full teachers, you know, perhaps paraprofessionals in some of the younger grades. It does seem like the number of 27, 27 five-year-olds without an aide is, is a lot for one person to handle. So I'm wondering if there cannot be a commensurate, you know, with increased growth and increased revenue, if some of that revenue can't be allocated and how we might look at that.
We, we actually, this year started a revenue sharing program with a school and we kept, we kept in very close touch throughout the year, which, which was good. And, and we understood their, their limitations. They certainly understood our limitations. So what we got to was an agreement that, that we will, you know, the schools, I, I don't know the exact percentages, but roughly 60% of our budget is the school, schools. And so we, we did agree that any 60% of our prop two and a half increase and 60% of our new growth would obviously be allocated there. And, and we would, you know, sort of live within those, those rules. So it's, it takes, you know, I, I think from my perspective, it takes, you know, a lot of the, the confusion and the indecision and the, and the, you know, sort of gutter fighting that, that happens in every town, but it takes a lot of that out of the equation because we are very crystal clear, we're, we're absolutely open book, you know? We, we share our numbers and I think, I think that's for a lot of departments even, not just the schools. I think that's a little bit surprising. So, and, and we do the same with, with unions when we have union bargaining. We absolutely share all of our information. We don't hide, hide a thing. So that they know, whether it be the school district or, or the unions or whoever we're talking to, employees for that matter, they know exactly where we are, what we can afford and what our limitations are. So we're, we're all talking at least about how we're going to allocate the dollars and not talking about things that we're trying to hide behind our backs. And so hopefully we're beyond those days. So, so I'm, I'm certainly available to have any conversation concerning, you know, funding shortfalls or, or emergency needs, you know, anytime, so.
Follow-up, when, so when, how do we assess new growth and at what point, I mean, would it be possible to get a clear reading on the new growth in the next two weeks and so we can hire someone for September 8th or whenever it is?
Well, no, you're, you're actually, it's a, it's a difficult process because, you know, assuming you're a growing community. And for a number of years, we weren't a growing community, but assuming you're a growing community, your new growth is assessed sort of a year after, you know, it actually occurs. So you're always seem to be a year behind. But the assessors are responsible for, for establishing the new growth figure. And honestly, it won't, that probably would, we wouldn't be looking at trying to estimate a new growth figure for fiscal 19 until well into, my guess is probably maybe by the end of the year, more likely into January for FY 19. And new growth, we're getting much more, I, I can tell you that we're getting much more refined in establishing new growth. New growth is established by the assessor, who traditionally looks at building permits and, and the value of, of the construction that's going on. So that's really the bulk of our new growth. With the systems that we've got in place now, both work systems and technology, when we actually do pull the trigger and establish an estimated new growth figure, it can be much more refined than it has been in the past. So that's one of those things that we used to be very conservative about, and I still think we're conservative, but at least we're, at least we've got better data to be able to establish that figure.
Right, thank you. Other questions?
I did have a question. So we talked about the drainage pipes, or you did, sir, sorry. And you said they were a particular material that was overestimated as far as its ability to sustain age?
What I'm told is that they were overhyped when, when they were the big new thing. And not just here, everything, everywhere. So all, a lot of highway departments were using them as, as drainage, for their drainage systems, road drainage systems. So, so they've now begun to decay. If there's, if there's a recourse, you know, keep in mind this 20, 25, 30 years ago. But obviously, if, if there's a product, product.
Recall.
Recall or, or there's some recourse, then, then we'll certainly go after it, but I'm not, not going to hold my breath on that one.
Would you have any idea or anybody, or do you have any idea of the amount that we've installed with that material over those years or with that timeframe?
The only thing, it's really, we don't have good records. The only thing we know is that we installed them for, you know, eight, 10, 12-year period when we did a lot of road construction. So what, I think Walnut, last year we redid Walnut and we redid all the drainage and that, that primarily because if you drove down the middle of the, of the outbound lane, there, it was caving in. And it was caving in because all of the aluminum piping was corroded and disintegrating. So those, that's the kind of sign that, that we'll see. Flag Street, I brought it up because just late last week, we had, had the road sort of started to cave in on Flag Street and the crews were out there replacing a disintegrated section of drainage pipe. So it'll continue to happen. You know, it also, we've also got water pipe, which I've mentioned before, we've got a lot of water pipe that, that needs replacing. That's, that's a little bit more methodical for us because we have a little bit better idea of what, what kind of piping is in the ground and how old it is. So the engineers can give us a better idea of what, where and what, what is going to be involved replacing that. But unfortunately, the drainage, you know, we, we have to rely on the institutional memories of some of the employees in town in order to try to figure out where that really is and what we can expect.
Failure rates.
Yeah.
And so occurrences. So you do have some, when you talked about, of course, capital expenditures, there is something that you can draw on for a scope of some project as you move forward?
Well, right now, any repairs are just coming out of the highway budget. But to the extent that we can identify areas such as Walnut where, where we had a good stretch, that was incorporated into, into a broader Chapter 90 project. So, so the funding for, for the repairs that we're going to have to make or the replacements we're going to have to make either come out of our capital plan or capital stabilization fund or come out of Chapter 90. It just is going to depend on the, the severity and the urgency of, of whatever area needs to be done.
Thank you. No further questions? And committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports they'd like to bring up?
I'm sorry, let me, go ahead. Can I make a report of the, the Community and Economic Development Committee met on July 25th? And we were tasked with making a recommendation on the open space plan and the, was it the nuisance, the littering nuisance ordinance? And we decided that it would make, we, the Community and Economic Development Director was out of town and we decided it made more sense for us to wait till we could meet with him to move forward on those two items.
Okay.
So we'll be doing that. We have a meeting scheduled later this month.
Any other committee? I suppose I could talk about the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee. It's been some input from folks via email and of course, folks showing up today with a panel of people that range across the full gamut to fully represent our town and its interests. viewpoints. I've been in contact as chair with some town leaders, planners, town managers out in Colorado, several cities of our size. I'll be moving on to Washington and the other states that have dealt with it, just to get some real firsthand accounts from towns that banned it, towns that haven't banned it, towns that have it, are next to it, all of the above. If I get referrals to safety services, police, fire, I'll talk to those folks as well. I'll be bringing that to the table for the coming committee meetings. The next committee meeting, we'll be discussing some of the data that's been gathered from both Washington and Colorado in regards to youth and how it affects adolescents and all of the hot-button issues that are question marks, trying to keep a balanced flow of data coming in to report back to the council. Anything that any of the council may have or suggest would be great too, as well as the townspeople. Next meeting is yet to be scheduled because we're trying to work out that, but it will be hopefully second week of August, we'll find out, and that will be posted. There is a page within the website with all of our reference documents that are available, white papers, research papers, data analyses, state reporting from both Colorado and Washington. And as I learn more and we learn more as a committee, there'll be more up there for everyone to see. So that is my report from that committee. Now we move to legislations for action.
Motion to approve Order Fiscal Year Eighteen Zero Zero One.
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion, thank you, sir.
Thanks. The Finance Committee met the other night and voted in favor of this, I believe, correct? Yes. And the Budget Finance Committee met last night and voted three zero to support this. It's great to have Bridgewater State providing fifty-five thousand dollars in a gift, and that will be equally distributed between fire, police, and roadways. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Now we can roll call vote.
Mr. Colombotes?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
I'm in favor and against.
Moving on. Old business ordinance D F Y one eight dash zero zero one establishing a stabilization fund. Finance Committee met in eight seven seventeen. Testification will provide upon receipt. The Budget and Finance Committee also met last night.
Yep. I'll make a motion to postpone this till our next meeting, given that the sponsor is not present tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we move to postpone that?
To the next meeting.
Require a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's moved out of the way. We're to new business. Any new business? No citizens' comments?
Julie Skoparis, Red Mill Road, Bridgewater. First, I want to say thank you for the meeting, and I want to say that all of what you said is correct. I am a school committee member. Mr. Wood is correct, we did get an increase over last year. However, Mr. Gallagher is also correct that it wasn't the original one, it wasn't even the next one, or the next one, I don't think. There was an increase, but certainly not enough to meet the needs and the demands of the growth in this town, and we would appreciate, if it takes a letter, an official letter from the administration or our committee, I'm sure that we would be willing to provide that, but I can't, or I would, as a representative for my constituents. I don't want the people and the voters to think that we didn't know that it was going to grow and that we didn't try to get the money, but we did, as Mr. Dutton said, try to live within, you know, as a team, work with a team, with a town, and if we take sixty percent of the budget, it's because we serve a very large population, and like Ms. Holbrook said, it is the future. So keep building, they don't come empty, you know, we got to educate them. So I appreciate the lights, I had kids in Little League, I was also had kids in school in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, two thousand and two, like Mr. Gugg, and that was not good times, and I would hate to return there. So whatever you can do, we'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Hi, Carlton Hennigan, eighty Austin Street. I'm speaking more from the master plan committee perspective. I have a question for Mr. Dutton. I had understood that he had an intern that was working on an action plan for the open space and rec plan that was put together, and it's close to being finally accepted, but I was under the understanding that the young man was going to speak with the master plan committee and other people in an open space committee, the one individual that's on that, and I was wondering what the status of that was.
I will ask him, I know he was, he comes, he's not here on Mondays and Tuesdays, so I will ask him on Monday when I see him.
How long is he an intern for?
I think he's here through the beginning of September, I believe.
Maybe we could, I'll work with you offline, but we have a master plan committee meeting, I think, the second Thursday of this month, and maybe we could have him come to that if we could. The other thing I have is, and this is the school committee person, we have tried to work as a green community, this is the energy committee now, we tried to work with the green community and get the school system to join with the Bridgewater Green Community because if they join and accept our, some of our plans that we have in place, the energy reduction plan that we have in place, they can get involved with the green community, and we can then take the schools that are not under renovation or otherwise, we can get those schools looked at for energy-saving purposes. And we're looking to get back that set of data documents from the university, so I was asking, from the Bridgewater Regional School District, I was going to ask Mr. Dutton if he could help that happen, because it's coming up soon, that the new cycle for bids are coming up, and we're getting light on things to bid, and we'd like to, I think we can save substantial money from the one school building that I monitor, we could save substantial money through the Green Communities grants. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? We can move to counselor comments.
And start with one end.
Pick a side.
Sick aside.
I'm sorry. Amazing that you forget, I'm still learning and forgetting as I learn, apparently. So I guess we'll start with Mrs. Loesch.
Thank you, Mr. Haley, for making it through your first meeting as the chair. I want to thank everyone who came down and voiced their opinions, I think it's valuable for people to be involved. I encourage you to stay involved beyond those current topics, while they might be ones that are passionate, there are many other committees and commissions that could use that passion in other ways, so I encourage you to continue to stay involved and come and voice your opinions and volunteer. And we will continue to kind of monitor what's going on with the school. As a parent of a three-year-old and a one-year-old, he'll go to school eventually, so I hope that he's not in a class of forty-five to fifty children, so we definitely want to keep an eye on that, and I will help in any way that I can there. But outside of that, I don't have anything, and I'll see everyone in September.
About a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, we talked about looking at town, town documents, reports, strategy around different, a lot of open space and master plan and other things. I think now that we're headed back toward the fall, we need to focus on that. I know we've talked about getting strategic planning involved and some of the other things, but downtown is very chaotic from a pedestrian point of view, other areas need a lot of work, so we need to really put a strong effort, whether we have a consultant helping us or we do it ourselves or we do committees, we need to get that underway. We talked about this about a year ago, I remember citizens standing up and saying, you know, that you're taking too long, well, we've taken too long, so we need to go. Secondly, I want to thank Merrily for coming in and doing that great presentation. I'd originally asked to have just a discussion item because I wasn't sure where the annual report was, and it looks like there's, that exceeded all expectations, that's awesome, and hopefully we can set it up so going forward, we'll have a report, because it is true, ten years, you look ten years back, you forget who was involved, what was going on, you know, the hot topics of the time, that sort of thing. I'm sure schools were hot topic ten years ago and twenty years ago, and I appreciate the efforts of the school committee too, they do a fantastic job. I've been involved as budget and finance on that committee for a long time, I enjoy it, I think that I add value to the role, feel I'm pretty capable in that. It's a very thin tightrope that we walk with the balance between things like public safety and schools and other things that are in our budget. And I know that there's some concern over class sizes and things, and we'll, you know, we'll take a look at that. I think this year was very fair in the budget process in that we took a look at the revenues that were shareable, and we shared it in a rate that matched what history showed. And so things like, well, we can have a list, but I think we came up with a fairly, fair revenue sharing plan this year, and taxes are just limited, we're capped, so we'll see what goes on. But I am going to ask, as I have in the past, and I don't think I've gotten this one, I believe there's a new teacher's contract that was approved, and maybe not yet, but there will be a teacher's contract approved, and I don't have a copy of the last one, I had a copy of the one before and possibly the one before that. And that, the teacher's contract is a huge amount of the expense within the school budget as well as other things. And one of the years, you know, the impact to the budget was internal to the contract, if you look at the positions on the, in the contract and how the, I call it four-square, because in a collective bargaining, you not only move up every time you get older by a year, but as you gain experience, you also move diagonally, so that's where the four-square comes in. In the year I looked at it, the contract was moving from a cap of fourteen years, moving in a vertical line, and the nineteen, I think it was the nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, or a fourteen to twenty and then twenty-one line was added in exchange for getting rid of half, a bachelor's plus fifteen line. And the net impact of that was that nineteen people, and I'm not interested in names, I'm just interested in the number of dots within the squares, nineteen people moved from fourteen years' experience up to twenty years' experience, and there was an increase, a huge increase of, I think it was three or four million dollars just by that exchange alone, and that purchases a lot of teachers. So what I'm trying to say is there's a balance everywhere, right? So there's a balance within the contracts, there's a balance between the schools and the town, and we, as the town officials, we don't have a lot of, a lot of control over what happens in the school budget, except that we tell the story of what shareable resources we have, and I think we did a fair job at sharing those. So hopefully, we can get past this issue that came up tonight, and we can find, continue to have a good working relationship going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate, I want to thank the citizens that came out tonight to speak on the medical, not the medical, the recreational marijuana issue, and of course, the citizens that addressed their concerns regarding class size in the kindergarten level. I'm sure the, when people come to speak to us during citizens' comments in open form, at that point, it's not really a dialogue that we have, it's more of a listening tool that we have to hear what is on your mind. But I'm sure that those issues will be discussed amongst us in the near future meetings, and I will always try to respond to emails that I get on my town email and elsewhere, as I always have, so the communication level can continue offline, but the school budget, as Councilor Wood said, is a big budget, that we really don't have a lot to say about it. But knowing the history of how things were maybe fifteen years ago, those that do negotiate with the unions, I'm sure that it's not that they sit there and give away the whole farm, they do the best they can and do an analysis of what the average is in their profession and so forth. So salaries will increase, benefits will cost more, and budgets will increase because of those things, but at the same time, the budgets need to hold the line the best that they can. We did the same thing this year, when we increased nine department heads by several thousand dollars each, several thousand dollars each, based on a study that was done two years ago. So we need to make those adjustments when we make that appropriation and not sit there and try to say, well, you know, you gave the teachers a five percent raise, and that's why we need to give you all the money, that those things, salary increases are going to happen. But I don't know where this immediate issue is going to go, I'm hoping that our town manager has some conversations with school administration to see, you know, do we need to appropriate more money to the schools this year? Are we going to be asked to do that? I don't know. But we haven't been asked to do that, we've been told that the kindergarten class sizes are too high and something needs to be done. So I don't know if it's something that can be worked out within the school budget or if it's something that they're going to request from us to ask to give them or appropriate a little bit more money for them for fiscal eighteen, I'm not sure. So those are the concerns for us tonight, I'm sure we'll have those discussions as a council down the road. Thank you.
Scott Colombotes?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
That leaves me. Thank you for being so patient and kind and nurturing for sitting in as president, not nearly as efficient as I had hoped or as efficient as Mr. Fitzgibbons is. I'll take this time as well to say that, you know, in my time here, I've learned quite a bit, first and foremost, learn how knowledgeable you folks are that I share this area with, and today really made it clear that I had plenty of learning to do. So with that, I'll move to my own comments. I have a child going into kindergarten. My wife and I talked exactly about this, the subject of the teacher versus student ratio in kindergarten, because that was discussed at orientation that I unfortunately missed, but she did not, and it's, seeing the emails come in and the discussions happen from teachers and parents to the council is not good to see because it's a potential issue there, but to Mr. Gallagher's point, I'm sure we'll be discussing it further, and, you know, though we haven't heard anything of an official stance coming through, we will talk about it more because we started now through the great communication that we have back and forth from the community and to us. So now it's incumbent upon us to discuss it some more as counselors and professionals and leaders in the town and for the school system as well. I did want to mention something else, but it slips my mind, so that'll be a do on my presidency for the day.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, that's the one thing I knew I was going to do.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher.
All those in favor? All in favor? Aye. Aye.